Be able to see you.
No worries. Hello everyone.
Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
All right, it's seven o'clock and so I will call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission. And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, can you may take a roll?
We can't hear you, Heather.
Commissioner Allsager?
Hello, good evening. I am in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan.
Commissioner Simon?
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Gillis?
Mount Pleasant, Isabella, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Ronan?
City of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan.
Commissioner Tolles?
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, state of Michigan.
Vice Mayor Prashbacher?
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan.
Mayor Joseph?
I am in the city of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan.
Okay, so everyone's here tonight. Tonight on our first round of agenda, we have our proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I just want to say, this is my third time able, being able to read this proclamation and it's, I think it's my favorite day to be on council, just because it recognizes our physical place of where we are and also our shared community, so.
Before you get started, Mayor, both Frank Cloutier from the PR director from the tribe and Gail Rule, who is on tribal council, are with us, so I'm moving them into the meeting.
Thank you, Manager Ridley, and like to thank Gail and Frank for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Of course. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, in 2010, the state of Michigan, the county of Isabella, and the city of Mount Pleasant recognized the official boundaries of the Isabella Indian Reservation through a historic set of agreements. And whereas, these historic agreements amicably settled longstanding Indian country jurisdictional issues and are now considered model agreements. And whereas, the city of Mount Pleasant desires to demonstrate and celebrate its strong and productive relationship with the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Council based on mutual respect and trust. And whereas, the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas, the city has proclaimed and recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day every year since 2014. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to educate about pre-existing Indian cultures that have survived an often violent colonization process and continue to exist and thrive in present-day America. Now therefore I, William Joseph, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day. And further, the city supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that the Saginaw-Chippewa and other indigenous peoples add to our city and community. And further, the city of Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the value of working collaboratively together with the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Council and looks forward to addressing areas of mutual concern in our community. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand in the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan this 11th day of October 2021. Thank you. I'd just like to invite the opportunity for Frank or Gail to say a few words.
Well, I will acquiesce to my tribal council member first.
Hopefully I can navigate the Zoom meetings and you can hear me. Today I was at Mid-Michigan Community College and they had a really nice, I guess, recognition and a program for Indigenous Peoples' Day today and it was nice. I got to see Nancy there and Mullenar and the president of MMCC and I think it's definitely a nice acknowledgement and I'll definitely, as long as I'm on councils, strive to work together with the city of Mount Pleasant and our neighbors and all the, you know, 16 townships to make the community better for all of us.
Thank you.
Well said, Gail. You know, this is, as I mentioned earlier today, this is always a challenging day for what I call Indian country. Because, you know, we talk about in past history, celebrating somebody who never really discovered America at all, nor had he discovered our people. However, it is a proud moment when we have our peers, our fellow citizens such as you folks who are willing to recognize indigenous people as the first people of the Americas. Very proud of the work that you've done, very proud of your consistency and the fact that you're willing to year after year acknowledge your tribal community and those indigenous individuals. You know, we come from a very solid stock of individuals, very resilient, a woodland people who use Mother Earth on a daily basis for sustainability. And it's very, very heartwarming and comforting to know that you folks realize that and celebrate our culture along with us. So in our language, Chimi Guetch, thank you very much for your acknowledgement and your continued support. It is absolutely noted, measured, and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail and Frank, for being with us today.
Mayor, if I just may mention, the event at Mid-Michigan College today, one of the joys that I had during the event is being able to hear the drum circle. And in the past, we've been able to do that at our city commission meetings, but since we've been virtual the last two years, I have really missed that opportunity because I find that a very interesting and heartwarming ceremony with the drum circle. So I'm so glad today to be able to be a part of that and to experience that again because it had been a while, so I appreciate the opportunity to represent the city today so I could experience that. Thank you.
I would be very happy to drum for you folks, but it would be a lot less traditional, a little more Led Zeppelin, so I'm sure we can avoid that at all costs.
We will have to do something on an off-meeting night, Frank.
There you go. Well, once again, thank you all so very much and please understand that this is recognized and appreciated. Our leadership on a day like today is quite busy, drawn in many different directions. You're my fourth event today. And as I said before, on behalf of Gail, the rest of the council and our tribal community, Chimi Guetch, for all that you do and the fact that you do recognize and acknowledge, it's much appreciated.
We very much thank you for taking the time to be with us today.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Joseph. I'm gonna leave the meeting too. Technically, I'm supposed to be teaching a course right now, so. It's one of those things where I was like, all right, I'm gonna go offline.
I think a lot of us can relate.
Have a good night.
All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Don't see any hands up, and so we will move to public input on agenda items. And this is the time for the public to comment on any items that are on the agenda tonight. If you're with us by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine and that will hit, that will do the raise hand feature. Looks like we do have John Zhang with us tonight. Would like to make a comment. John, we do ask that you state your name and your address for the record.
Mayor, Mr. Zhang was being moved into the meeting when you said that, so you may need to say that again. I don't think he could hear you.
Okay.
John, you're in the meeting now, so you should be able to unmute. There he is.
There.
Hi, John.
I think I caught it, Joe Wilson, Will. First, let me thank the commission for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Zhang. I'm the chairman for the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority. In a brief period of time, I'd like to do two things. First, tell you what's been happening with the Rec Authority and secondly, to make a monetary request. There'll be that discussion later in the agenda, but at least I wanted to talk about that. The Rec Authority's been meeting regularly by Zoom. We elected officers, I being the chairman, and the school board's appointment to the Rec Authority, Lisa Diaz-Saisma is the treasurer, Allison Giudini, the township's appointment to the Rec Board is the secretary. Other Rec Authority board members includes Dan Shingles and Judy Wagley. We have also accepted the volunteer services, not on the Rec Board, of Nolan Camu, a CMU student. We've adopted the Articles of incorporation. We've had numerous discussions about our tasks and we have created startup budget. We've talked about a website to keep the public informed about our progress and to solicit donations. We've talked about marketing materials to help show the public why the aquatic center benefits the community. As you're aware, our life, the life of the aquatic Rec Authority has been limited by you and the other participating entities to three years. Rec Authority's task before those three years are up is to get the issue on the ballot and let the voters decide if they want an aquatic center. The boundary lines for the Rec Authority are the Mount Pleasant School District boundary lines. Rec Authority has prepared a budget and is asking for $10,000 from the city commission. The Rec Authority will also be asking the same amount from the other participating entities, which will give the authority $30,000 for the startup funds. The school board has approved that contingent upon the township and the city doing the same thing. The Rec Authority's been unable to make significant steps without funding. We can't ask for donations from the public because we don't have an EIN number. We can't get that without legal assistance and that will cost money. We cannot pay a bill or invoice without bond insurance for those who write checks and that's not possible without paying for bond insurance. The city of Mount Pleasant Commission and the other two participating entities mandated the bond insurance in the Articles of Corporation when you form the Rec Authority, but we have no funding to get bonded. The biggest part of the startup budget, of which you have a copy, is for their professional consulting. The Rec Authority's primary job is to establish the costs associated with building and operating the aquatic center and then let the voters decide. Before it can be put to a vote, a significant amount of work will be necessary to lock in the costs from everything, from location to staffing, from the size of the pool to construction costs, and even updating the initial feasibility study to take into account the things that have changed in our community. Eventually, the Rec Authority will spend more than we're asking for today. We intend to do fundraising when we get things in place, some of the things that I mentioned previously. The city of Mount Pleasant, the Mount Pleasant School Board and the Charter Township of Union formed the authority, but there was no funding provided to accomplish its tasks. I ask you, the commission of the city of Mount Pleasant, to approve $10,000 for the Aquatic Recreation Authority. You have a copy of our startup budget, which outlines our proposed expenditures, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have as explained in the formal request letter, which you should have also got in advance. We will be reporting back to you in the future about our progress and our expenditures. On behalf of the Rec Authority, I thank you for hearing our request.
Thank you, John. Could we just get your address for the record?
Six, two, three Hopkins.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Allsager?
I just have one question for John. I heard you say the word for the pool and last time I was aware of the research and everything that had been done, it was for an aquatic center that might include two pools. Is that still on the table?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yeah, how you doing, John? Got one quick question here. I'm looking at the budget spreadsheet and we have $16,500 on there for a feasibility study.
Yes.
Usually this is done ahead of time, isn't it?
They have done some of that feasibility study ahead of time, but now we're at that point where we need to get with the with the construction people and say, let's get some, some ironed in cost to make some preliminary agreements to say, if we say this is going to be the cost, it's not going to change on us. We'll need to do those due diligence that goes with naming the piece of property and getting some memorandum of understanding. It's, we've done the feasibility study, which says we can make it pay for itself, but now we need to lock in those costs to make sure that this is not a pie in the sky kind of an endeavor.
Okay, thank you, John, for clarifying that.
Yes. Nancy, I'd like to stay until I get to that part on the agenda, but I've had a family emergency hop up, so I'm gonna need to cut out. If you can have somebody text me or send me an email tomorrow so I'll know what happened, but and I apologize for not being able to stay on, but sometimes things happen here.
We understand and yes, I will definitely let you know how the conversation goes, John. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And by the way, it's good to see you all.
It's good to see you. Nancy, do we have any emailed comments to the commission?
No, Mayor, we do not have any.
Okay. At this time, I don't see any other hands up in the attendees and so I will close public input on agenda items at this time. Next is our receipt of petitions and communications and I will hand it over to Manager Ridley.
Yes, under this section of the agenda tonight, you have the report on pending items and attached to that is the summary of the direction that we thought we heard from you during our work session discussion two weeks ago regarding the ad hoc committee on local businesses. And so we will be pursuing the next steps that are outlined in that communication unless we hear differently from you. Also attached to that pending report is the monthly report we provide you on citizen complaints received. And the annual report we provide you on the benefit of the Experimental Aircraft Association to the airport. And as some of you may recall, that annual report is given to you prior to when their lease renewal is up for their hangar at the airport so that you can see what they've been doing for us to help make the airport successful. Also, under the petitions and communications is the July minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the August minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board, and unfortunately, a resignation from Mr. Mumford from the Parks and Recreation Commission because he will be working out of town. And then lastly, is a communication received from Micah Foken regarding the marijuana licensing ordinances. And that is all of the petitions and communications we have for you this evening.
Thank you, Manager Ridley. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar this evening? I don't see any hands up and so, Manager Ridley, if you would, go through the consent calendar for us tonight.
Yes, we are recommending the approval of the minutes of your meeting of September 27th. We only have one bid for you this evening and that is for the replacement of some of our fire department mobile radios. You'll recall, we have that project in our capital improvement plan and it was originally planned for 2023. But as Central Dispatch is transitioning to a new system, the current electronic patch that we have on our digital radios is becoming more unreliable and will no longer be supported in the near future. So we've accelerated part of our purchases in a phased approach and the bid before you tonight is for the purchase of the first 12 portable radios and is recommending an award to the low-qualified bidder of Procom at a cost of $100,696. And funding for this purchase would come from a previously received tribal 2% grant of just over $46,400 and the other $54,000, almost $300 would be from a budget amendment from the Capital Improvement Fund. So we're recommending the commission approve the award of the bid and the appropriate budget amendments. Next, we're asking you to set a public hearing on a, or a second public hearing on the request from MAC LTT to transfer the three remaining years of the industrial facilities tax abatement from the Daco facility. While the company was finalizing the paperwork to send to the state based on your previous approval, it was noticed that the number of jobs that were committed to be retained and the number to be added in the next two years differed from the application that was sent to the city commission from what was sent to the state of Michigan. And in order to bring those numbers in sync, an amended application has been submitted to the city with the lower numbers of both retained jobs and projected jobs in the two years. And because of that, it is necessary to schedule and hold a second public hearing based on the amended application, which we are recommending that you set for October 25th. And there is a representative from MAC LTT on our meeting tonight. If you have any questions regarding the differences in the job numbers, if you want to ask those questions tonight, or he will also be available in two weeks during the public hearing. And then, as you just heard regarding the Aquatic Center Authority, much progress has been made by the authority, but they are stuck now with needing some additional funds to really get started with some of their paperwork. So the proposed budget they have before you includes very important legal and consulting work that must be done to put together the plan and the information to start the fundraising and the education for the public. And they're asking for a commitment of those startup funds from each of the three founding partners, as Mr. Zhang said. I've reviewed the request and I believe it's reasonable and it focuses on the types of activities that will be needed to make the purpose of the authority successful. As Mr. Zhang indicated, the public schools approved the request last Monday and we're recommending you approve the $10,000 request tonight with the appropriate budget amendment. And that would be contingent on Union Township approving their section of the request, which they are scheduled to do this week on Wednesday. The next item on the consent calendar is both an Michigan Department of Transportation resolution and a contract amendment with Mead and Hunt, and I'm gonna talk about these two together. Earlier this year, you approved both a grant agreement with MDOT and the contract with Mead and Hunt for the work to prepare for the Phase Two of the slope clearing project out at the airport. Since that time, it has been determined that a wetland delineation of some of the area is needed. And so before you tonight is both the grant amendment to provide additional funding for that wetland delineation and a contract amendment for Mead and Hunt to do that additional work. The net additional cost to the city after the grant is received will be only $740, but we recommend you approve the resolution for the grant and the contract amendment with Mead and Hunt. And then the next item on the consent calendar is, earlier this year, you appointed the city manager to seven different boards, commissions, and committees as a result of my position. And those seven boards are listed in your packet and we're recommending that you take action tonight to appoint the new city manager, Aaron Desens, to those seven boards effective November 1st upon my departure. There is one board, the Airport Joint Operations Board, that we're suggesting the appointment be effective immediately as I will actually be out of town for the October meeting, so Mr. Desens might as well jump in with both feet while I'm gone if you approve that appointment tonight. And then lastly, we have approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you, Manager Ridley. Commissioner Tolles?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
And Commissioner Allsager?
I second the motion.
So we have a motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Any discussion? I don't see any hands up. And so at this time, we can take a roll call vote on approving the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prashbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, motion is carried. Next on our agenda is our, we have one public hearing tonight. This is on the Special Assessment District One for 2021 regarding the pedestrian lighting project and approval of Resolution Five. Major Ridley, did you have any comments before I open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. As the commission is aware, we've been installing pedestrian lighting in various neighborhoods throughout the city since 2014. And the recently approved capital improvement plan continues that capital improvement annually in various neighborhoods throughout at least 2027. So the public hearing tonight is for the proposed assessment role, which will cover part of the costs for the installation of pedestrian lights on Illinois Street that will be installed next year between Maine and Fancher. And this role is prepared based on the Capital Infrastructure Special Assessment Policy as amended and allocates 40% of the estimated cost to the property owners and 60% to the city at large. As indicated in the agenda packet, the assessment role was corrected to show the city as the owner of parking lot or parcel 397, which is parking lot seven, and shows the city paying for that civic zone assessment for that parcel. So after holding the public hearing this evening, the commission can consider Resolution Number Five to complete the special assessment process. And Resolution Five basically accepts the role and then sets the repayment terms for those property owners who choose to spread the assessment out over multiple years. And the resolution would allow for payback over up to eight years at a 3% interest rate as outlined in the policy if the property owner chooses to do that. So we recommend you approve Resolution Five after holding the public hearing. And as a reminder, five affirmative votes will be needed for that resolution instead of a simple majority since more than 50% of the property owners objected to the assessment in writing.
Thank you, Manager Ridley. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. And if you're with us by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine on your telephone. And if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine on your telephone. We do ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Manager Ridley, did we have any emailed comments on the public hearing tonight?
No, Mayor, we do not have any.
I don't see any hands up in the attendees section. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and ask that the commission consider approving Resolution Number Five. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I move that we approve Resolution Number Five as outlined in the packet.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I will second that.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Right. I will, I'd just like to reiterate that we do have to have five affirmative votes for the motion for it to be successful. With no hands up, I think we can go to a roll call vote on the motion to approve Resolution Five as drafted.
Commissioner Tolles?
No.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
All right, motion has carried. Next on our agenda is item number 14. Just want to make sure I'm right about that. Yep. Item number 14, which is to consider a budget reallocation for mental health services assistance. I would sort of hand this over to Manager Ridley, or if Paul, Paul is with us tonight, if you'd like to make a few comments before we just start our discussion.
Yes, I'll start out, Mayor. As the commission is aware, Director Loria is regularly reviewing ways to improve our public safety response. And over this past nine months, he has completed a significant amount of research into methods to assist with the increasing number of police calls for service that include a mental health concern component and/or a drug addiction situation. And based on his research and our community needs, at a future meeting, we will be bringing a contract to you for consideration for a one-year pilot program with Rise Advocacy Services. And this contract would provide a full-time mental health professional who would be available to our police department to respond to the scene when requested. But more importantly, the piece that Paul will be recommending is that the person would be available to work with individuals after the fact to connect them with the resources that are needed to address their mental health concerns, which he believes is key to the success of this program. And the way this program would be, work would be similar to what was implemented previously for our domestic violence situations, and that follow-up has been very helpful. So as I indicated, the contract will be at a future meeting. But what we're asking for you tonight is to confirm the budget reallocation to make sure we have the funds available to cover that contract. And we estimate that the city's one-year contract cost for that will be no more than $70,000. And we have savings from various vacancies within our police department that have occurred this year that will cover that first year cost. And then upon evaluation of the program next year is when we would be talking about the potential of an additional budget allocation. And quite frankly, the city manager has authority under the charter to reallocate funds within a division. But the reason we're bringing it to you tonight for confirmation is because in this case, the funds will be used over, it was going to cross two fiscal years. And also, it will be used to fund a contract that will be coming to you at one of these upcoming meetings. So we're recommending you confirm the reallocation and pre-approve the carryover of the funds. And assuming that is approved tonight, Paul will then work on finalizing the contract and bring it to you for consideration. And I just have to tell you, I'm really proud of the work that Paul and his staff have done in identifying this solution to address these increasing needs in our community that they're seeing on a regular basis. And Paul has been moved into the meeting if you should have any questions of him or if he has anything. Paul, would you like to say anything further before they begin their deliberation?
Yeah, just real quick. First of all, thank you. The, the important part of this is the embeddedness of the individual into the police department. And it, what I mean by that is this, is that officers, staff, they, they have to see this person, feel confident in their, their abilities, where they, they know them, or, or, yeah, they know them, so that they, they can build that relationship. And I realize up to $70,000 for a one-year pilot program is not, you know, pocket change. I get that. I, I fully recognize and am cognizant of that. But I will say that the embeddedness of that person, it can't be someone who's, it's changing over because they found a, a different job or, or were not paying a market share of what a person would get that would be doing this, say, in the private sector. So when you consider this position, consider that aspect as well. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ronan? George, you're muted.
Yeah, I like, it, it seems pretty innovative. You know, this is sort of my hair, hair a little bit. I like the idea that it's an experimental thing for a year. And I'm sure it'll be evaluated, figure out what to do. So I'm going to move to confirm the reallocation of carryover of existing vacancy savings in 2021 to be used for a one-year contract with Rise Advocacy Incorporated.
Commissioner Tolles?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to prove, to approve the reallocation of funds. Discussion? Commissioner Alsager?
I just have a comment to ask Paul a question. I fully support this motion and, you know, understand there is funding available. And I guess I would say my hope would be there would be some good data kept with it. Just, you know, say on the off chance that a majority of the calls involve CMU, that maybe in the future, there could be some cost sharing with other entities.
Yeah, let me just comment on, on that aspect because in some of my talks or research, that did come up. And what I had found is that in, in Commissioner Ronan or Commissioner Perschbacher probably can speak to this, is that CMU really has a kind of a robust counseling, clinical type services they offer to their students. Here, here is where it gets tricky, is obviously, we have students living off campus, and they have access to those on-campus services. But our police officers, you could, and this isn't an excuse, this is just the reality. Our police officers to navigate their counseling center, to call somebody, they're just not confident in it. And I know you can say, well, that's, you know, well, now it's 10 digits. That's 10 digits in a phone message. Yep, you're right. But they also need, what I talked about before, that relationship. And I think that's where we're going to make the, make the biggest difference. And, and again, this isn't to take away from CMU's counseling center. It is, it is someone that can navigate, that has the contacts, that can see it through and knows the system. So that has been talked about and was, was considered.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Director Loria for all the work and research he's put into this. I've had numerous discussions with him on, on something related to this with the closing of the Regional Center. And then, most of these people are put in group homes. And, and I think we really have a problem here. I, I think we do. I see a lot of officers at these same homes multiple times. And really, a, a police officer is not a, not a counselor. He's not a psychologist. And I, I think this is needed. And I, and I'm glad Paul did the work on this. And I definitely think this is something needed, and we have to implement it. And again, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Pete.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I never want to give up an opportunity to praise the university and the work they do. I, you know, the Counseling Center is embedded in the dorm. They do a good job with the students. They're just not set up to deal with something like this, to be honest. I, I mean, you know, I, I worked with them closely in the past. A, a lot of kudos to them. They handle very difficult situations. They're well-trained. But this is sort of innovative. I, I think, and maybe 35 years ago, I saw as part of a mobile crisis team that did some of this work with the police in New York. And I mean, it's, I, I'm just so thrilled that, you know, public safety is willing to take this on. I, I mean, it's a, it's a huge, huge lift. I think they're going into it eyes wide open. It's innovative. It's, and it's not easy. And so I, you know, I look forward to hearing from Director Loria, if there's other things he needs, or I mean, as, as it goes on. I mean, it's a, it's absolutely state of the art. So I, I absolutely support it. And, and the university, if not duplicating something that exists.
Commissioner Tolles?
I just missed, I wanted to make one point about the state, you know, just basically kicking the can on this and the DHHS having limited funds. I mean, you know, you shut a regional center down, you put all these people in the homes, they have problems, and then you expect the city police to deal with it. It's, it's just sad. Thank you.
I just have a question for Director Loria. What's it feel like to hit it out of the ballpark?
Well, it, it, um, the pitches have been very good. And, and trust me when I say that Nancy has been instrumental. Don't, don't think for one second that this was, this was me and, and just my staff. Her guidance and support were huge. And I'm just very happy, A, that we can hopefully get it approved while she's still here and under her watch. But she, she's instrumental in this. And, and when you got that kind of support, the baseball becomes very big and easy to hit. So I, I appreciate that. Then I had some help from community members. And if they're listening, they know who they are that were huge, huge.
Well, um, to, to your credit and to staff and to Nancy as well, I, you know, no one, no one from the council asked you to undertake this. And the fact that in your report, it states that, that you really find that this may be the first program of its kind in the state. I just think that speaks to the, the value that we have as our staff, the commitment that you, Director Loria, are putting towards your work and, and our police officers are putting towards the community. I, you know, I think this, this, this is one of those moments where being involved in local government is very rewarding. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, doing what we can to help you be successful in this, with this program. And really, hats off, hats off to you and, and, and everyone at, at City Hall and DPW.
Thank you.
Or not DPS, I'm sorry.
Well, DPW too, they're good too.
Yeah, they're, they're good too.
They're damn good.
And I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but Paul has done a lot of great work on this. But there's still quite a bit of work to be done because as he implements this over the next year, there will certainly be some learning curves that we will go through as we begin implementing this and collecting the data and evaluating it. So I think it's a great first step, but there's still quite a bit of work to be done, unfortunately. But this is a huge hurdle to get through.
And, and one thing I, I don't want to miss in mentioning is, is Ben Rice. From the onset of the domestic violence, we had certain expectations and hopes. And on both ends, I feel like that partnership and relationship has, has just been outstanding and has met expectations and exceeded them. And so, as, as I was looking at putting this together, it kind of always led back to them. And when, when we, when we finally approached them, their willingness to, you know, accept some of the financial responsibility in the way of benefits. I mean, you don't get any better than that as, as far as commitment. And so they, they've been very good. Make no mistake, they're, they're, they're top-notch.
Well, I think with that, we can take a roll call vote on the motion to approve the reallocation of the funds for the Mental Health Services Assistance.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Next on our agenda is item number 16, which is appointment of city commissioner to the appointments committee. And Commissioner Simon has been gracious to offer her time and her energy to join the appointments committee. As we all know, the appointments committee has a lot of work to do at the end of the year for reappointments and to get our volunteer boards and commissions ready for the upcoming year. And so I thank Commissioner Simon for her time and her dedication and that's, did you want to say anything or?
I mean, I, I can. I appreciate you coming to me and asking me to do this. I think this will be a really interesting and exciting opportunity to get more involved in the community. And I'm excited to get to work. So, thanks.
Next is item number 17, which is to consider a wage adjustment for our current city manager. This came about, really, I think this has been over a year in the making. As you may recall, last year, we were in a pandemic and a lot of things were in a flux with our, our revenue sharing, where our local property values would be. And we weren't really sure where our budgets would line up with our, our costs, our liabilities. With that in mind, you know, Manager Ridley took a, and her team took a step to work with our unions to work on short-term contracts, to approve their contracts and, you know, not put pressure on the, in the, in the moment that we were in last year. And with that, I think the commission made a decision together to, to hold off on, on doing any bonuses or made a decision together to to hold off on on doing any bonuses or raises. And that included our city manager. And to city, to our city manager's credit, she's told me repeatedly that she doesn't work for, she doesn't work for money. She works for the job and she's really dedicated to our city. I think she has a passion for municipal government and and the community and all the things that go with it. And I think that's been really reflected in her last seven plus years as city manager and in twenty years working for the city of Mount Pleasant. With that being said, we we didn't want to leave her out. Our our unions and our management team did end up getting a bonus last or a page or wage increase last year. And we were able to settle most of our union contracts up to this point. And hopefully later tonight, we'll be able to settle one more. But with that, I'd like to offer a bonus for Manager Ridley of three percent of her wages from last year and this year. And that amounted to somewhere in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and some change. And through discussions with the commission, it really seemed like a there was more of a preference for an even number. And so I guess I would I would move that we offer a bonus to Manager Ridley for seven thousand dollars for her time this year and last and her dedicated service. Commissioner Tolles?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Lawson Pans? Commissioner Alsager?
I want to fully express my support for Nancy and for this motion.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
As you had mentioned, last year, we had decided not to give her a raise or a bonus. And it was due to the fact that we were unsure of what our funds would be because of the pandemic. But there was never a thought, I believe, in any one of our minds that Nancy was not deservant of that raise or bonus. And I'm very happy that we're able to do this at this time. You've earned, you've earned more than this, Nancy. You've been, you've been there for us. You've been gracious. You've always answered questions when we needed them answered. Even when I text you on a Saturday, you answer my questions and I appreciate that.
Commissioner Tolles, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just want to concur that we talked about this last year. And I think it was like a five, five to two vote that that me and Commissioner Gillis voted to proceed with giving her the bonus. But then in our discussion, we left it that we would review this again. And when we could, we'd make this up. And I think this is more fair. I think she's deserving this. And, you know, we need to get this done. Thank you.
All right, well, without any other hands, I guess we can proceed to a roll call vote on to provide Manager Ridley a bonus of seven thousand dollars.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mayor, if I may, I would just like to say thank you. As you indicated, money is not my primary motivator. And last year, I understood the decision that you made, even though 2020 was a difficult year for all of us as we navigated the pandemic. And I also recognized when I decided mid-year to retire that I was putting that at risk because you had committed that you would relook at it. And I knew that when I retired mid-year that I was putting that at risk, but I was willing to do that. So I appreciate you revisiting it before I left and recognizing not only last year in the pandemic, but the ten months of this year. So thank you very much. But I do have to say, we couldn't do all that we do without the support of all of the staff that we have. And they're really the ones with the boots on the grounds every single day that are making our services what they are. And I will certainly miss working with them and will be indebted to them. But thank you for doing this this evening. It is very much appreciated.
Next on our agenda is item number eighteen, which is to consider closed session, closed session pursuant to subsection eight C of the Open Meetings Act, for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I move that we go into a closed session.
And Commissioner Alsager?
I will second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second for our closed session pursuant to eight C of the Open Meetings Act. And we'll take a roll call vote on that motion.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Gillis?
Yes, thank you. Just want to continue to encourage everyone to get a vaccination. They are free through the Health Department. And if you are still need more information, please reach out to your health provider to discuss the options that have become available. We do have three different vaccines on the market. Those of us that have been vaccinated, we may be eligible for a booster. So keep that in mind if you have underlying conditions or immune compromised. But I want to acknowledge our community members that have kept each other safe with not only masks, but doing their part in social distancing and, of course, vaccinations, which is the true measure of a sacrifice, I believe, to our community. We will get through this pandemic if we can all work together and come together. So I ask the reluctant people that are still on the sidelines. It has been FDA approved. Please talk to your medical provider. Please talk to people who are caring for individuals in our ICU. And hopefully, next year, we will finally be out of this weather. So please continue to try to do what we can to keep each other safe. I also want to thank the Mount Pleasant community for a wonderful homecoming and a win. And glad that we could come together and celebrate some of the milestones that we've been able to, we've missed for the past year and continue to try to come out with community events. The more we see each other, well, the more we will bring each other back together and we won't be so separated into our homes and and hopefully be able to see each other and communicate to bring us all together again. I want to also give my thanks to Nancy and her dedication to our city and our city commission. You are individual, an individual that we will not be able to replace. And I will be, I will miss you very much. So I I hope you the best wishes in your retirement and go out and enjoy your life. And I I'm sure you will still keep in touch with what's going on in the city. It's hard to let go after you've served a community for so long. But please try and we will be left in in hands that will carry on what you have actually brought to fruition. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Glad to see that Broadway Street was opened up today. And I hope this commission next year will relook at that and keep the relationship and discussion going with the business people downtown. You know, they they really need some help right now. I know we have difficult times and I just hope it's continued. And then Nancy, I want to thank you. It's been great to serve with you and you're going to be best. Thank you.
I'd like to echo some of the comments by Commissioner Gillis. Obviously, we're in the middle of a pandemic still. And get your vaccine if if you feel that's the best way to go about protecting yourself from COVID and protecting your neighbors and your family members. Wear a mask if you're indoors and and to be careful, use common sense. No one's immune and that's how we get through this. We get through this together. So. I don't see any other hands up. And so we will recess. We have, we'll do our public comment and then we'll do that and then I'll get it. Other stuff. I'm sorry, I always at the end of the meeting. All right, so I'll open up public comment for agenda and non-agenda items at this moment. If you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine and you'll raise, it'll hit the raise hand. If you're with us by phone or with you with us by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Do ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Manager Ridley, do we have any emailed comments to the commission?
No, Mayor, we have not received any.
All right, I don't see any hands up in the attendees, so I will close the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And then we will have a closed session for the commission. There's a separate link in your email for that closed session. We'll take about a five minute recess before we head into that. And then after the closed session, we will come back into our open session for item number twenty. And then we do, following that, we have a work session on a couple of topics, including the budget and then an outdoor ice rink options. So at this time, I guess we'll go into recess. I have eight oh two on my clock.
Okay.
I don't know, Laurie, it worked okay this time. I don't know.
That was a little crazy. Okay, Mayor, I think you have everybody back now.
All right, thank you. All right, we will reconvene our meeting and we're, it brings us to item number 20, which is to consider approval of the labor agreement with paid-on-call firefighters. And recognize, Commissioner Tollis.
I will make a motion to approve the labor contract agreement with the paid-on-call firefighters.
And Commissioner Gillis. We have a motion in a second to approve the contract. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank our paid-on-call firefighters for their dedication and their work for the community. That's, you know, being a first responder is not an easy job. And to take that on as an extra responsibility, especially is probably not your main source of income is shows a lot about someone's character and their willingness to help out their community, so. shows a lot about someone's character and their, their willingness to help out their, their community, so. I guess we can go to a roll call vote on approving the labor agreement with the paid-on-call firefighters.
Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tollis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Um. Next on our agenda, we do have a work session tonight. We have a budget presentation by Chris Saladin, our Assistant Finance Director. And then a discussion on the outdoor ice rink options. Nancy, do we need a couple of minutes for Chris to be ready?
No, actually, we, Chris pre-recorded the budget presentation, so Nick has it queued up and he can start it for you. And then I'll move Chris into the meeting and he can answer any questions you might have this evening if you have any up based on that. So Nick, you can go ahead and start the video.
Tonight's presentation is going to be a high-level overview of the proposed 2022 operating budget. We'll provide a little bit more in-depth information on the general fund, as well as cover some of the major items from the other funds. This budget incorporates the five goals from the recently approved master plan. They can be found on Roman numeral pages six through nine. Aside from the goals, there's also a section that highlights major projects and initiatives that are not part of the five goals, since the master plan is not inclusive of everything that the city does. Here is a look at the total expected expenses across all funds for 2022. As a reminder of what all of our funds or buckets of money are used for, general fund expenditures are expected to be around $14.8 million and are used for the general operations of the city. Our special revenue funds are expected to be around $7 million and consist of more restricted revenue sources. This is Act 51 Street funding, special assessments, PSD, recreation programs, those types of activities. Our capital improvement millage is a 1.5 mil dedicated for capital improvement projects. Our debt service is a .5 voter-approved mil for bonding the board and building rehab. These bonds will be paid off in 2022. Our component units are expected to be just under $400,000 and include activity like the TIFA, the LDFA, DDA, and the EDC. Our enterprise funds are anticipated to be around $25.7 million, with the majority of that being in the water resource recovery facility due to bonding for major plant renovations. Our internal service funds are expected to be around $4.2 million, and these are for our motor pool and insurance since we are self-insured. As you can see from the chart, property taxes and funding from the state make up around 70% of our expected $16.1 million in revenue. The resolution that comes to you for approval in December will have at least one key change from the proposed budget summary on Roman numeral page 13. There you can see the restricted revenue line includes just under 1.3 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. We recently found out we should be booking this as deferred revenue and recognizing it in the year that the funds are spent. Nothing changes in the amount of funding or what we can use the funds for. The change is just related to how the funds are recorded from an accounting perspective. Right now, no commitments have been made for these funds. And just as a reminder, the commission has to decide how to use them by 2024, and we have to have the funds spent by 2026. This budget was built assuming flat taxable value from 2021. Our best guess is that we will see gains in taxable values for 2022 that may exceed 3% due to increases in Consumer Price Index, which is currently above 3%. However, we did not have enough information to build that into the budget at the time of preparation. Our state share revenue is projected to slightly decrease in 2022. The proposed 2022 budget is modeled on keeping the millage rate flat for 2022. It's been unchanged since 2014. The City Commission has an opportunity every spring to look at the millage rate before it's implemented. General fund expenses are expected to be around $14.8 million, with the majority of those costs in compensation and benefits, since we are primarily a service organization. Here's a look at how the $14.8 million is expected to be spent by division. More or less, these percentages stay the same. They can fluctuate a little bit if one of the divisions has a large capital project, but this is a pretty good representation of how the divisions operate year to year. Our projected general fund expenditures are mostly unchanged for operations. Because of the many economic unknowns that were posed by COVID-19, the City Commission prioritized the most critical infrastructure projects for 2021 and postponed the rest until 2022. This means you'll see an increase in the number of projects proposed for next year. Additionally, while the internal financing for the Mount Pleasant Center has been repaid, we're still making payments to the State of Michigan for funds that were used to clean up the property. We restart these payments to the state that were paused for 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. One of the major projects that we have slated for 2022 is the redesign of the city's website. We are going to redesign the site to work better with mobile devices, be more ADA-friendly to increase accessibility, and hopefully make it easier for residents to find the information that they need. Another significant change is an increase in our health insurance rates that affects all departments. Rates need to increase 7% in order to maintain appropriate fund balance. While this increase may seem large, it is the first time that rates have increased since 2017. This budget also includes funding for a part-time, non-benefited public relations employee. This has traditionally been a paid internship in the past, but we've recently had issues finding interns. The position was converted to part-time partway through 2021 using vacancy savings. We are projecting to have a balanced general fund budget for 2022 that does not require us to use fund balance to close any deficit. We anticipate adding $31,800 to the unassigned fund balance. This leaves us with approximately $5.6 million at the end of 2022, which is 37.5% of expenditures. This is in compliance with the City Commission policy that we have to have at least 15% in unassigned fund balance. Our assigned fund balance has us continuing to put funding into a reserve to replace our fire apparatus. At the end of 2022, we are projecting we will have $737,560 available for economic initiatives. Some of our major projects this year include reconstructing Illinois Street, Brown, Crapo, and the alleys between Michigan and University, and the alley between University and Franklin. Due to the number of large reconstructions, we are not planning for any street overlays for 2022. The next two slides represent projects that are at least partially funded by our dedicated capital improvement millage. These projects were approved during our capital improvement plan process earlier this year. Taking a look at the activity in our enterprise funds, the airport is looking at continuing the tree abatement project, as well as doing some design work on the taxiway rehab. The water resource recovery facility is issuing bonds in 2022 to facilitate a major overhaul of the plant. We are close to finalizing a contract to have the engineering done, which will help us accurately project how much bond funding will be needed, as well as how long the bond terms should be for. In solid waste, we plan on continuing our twice-a-year no-fee brush pickup program. For water, we have quite a few capital projects planned, some of which were postponed from 2021. This budget also includes an additional water distribution operator. This position is needed to ensure that appropriate maintenance and prevention activities for the underground mains and valves that basically connect all of our system together are maintained, so we can have a safe drinking water supply. Looking at our component units, our LDFA and TIFA, both the CBD and the Industrial Park North, are set at a 0% capture rate, and our Mission DDA is set at a 28% capture rate. We have continued to look at our fees under the updated City Commission fee policy that services and programs primarily benefiting one property owner or user should be covered by fees if the user of the service or program generally has a choice or option to use the service. We are looking at updating the fees for industrial facility tax abatements to be in line with similar applications like the neighborhood enterprise and commercial facility tax abatement, since they take the same time and resources to complete. We're also looking at creating a new fee for tax parcel splits and combinations, since the process meets the definition of what should be a fee versus supported by tax revenue under the commission's fee policy. We're also recommending some updated recreation program fees based on increased costs for running the recreation programs. The Parks and Recreation Commission is currently reviewing the fee proposals and will provide feedback on the proposed increases. For 2022, we're recommending an increase of approximately 61 cents per month for water and $1.77 per month for water resource recovery for the average residential household. As has been our past practice, we look to see how our rates compare with our neighbors in surrounding communities. Due to the large capital projects at Water and Water Resource Recovery, we're starting to see the impacts in our monthly utility rates. Even with these proposed increases, we continue to be one of the most affordable among the communities that we've historically used as a comparison. Looking at our unknown or unresolved issues, one of the most important unknowns is the state's budget and how they ultimately decide to fund cities. State shared revenue is our second-largest share of general fund revenue and could have a large impact on our general fund. The state has approved their budget, but they have not provided any new estimates beyond the ones used to prepare this budget. During our capital improvement plan, we discussed the town center redesign that was contingent on a large grant from MEDC. Due to the uncertainty of the grant, this budget is built without the revenue or cost of the project. If we're successful in our grant application, we will bring the project to the commission for consideration as a budget amendment. If we are unsuccessful with our grant application, we will have to decide how we want to handle the parking lot moving forward. It's likely we cannot let it go for too many more years because, because of its poor condition. As is outlined in your packet this evening, the work the ad hoc committee did with our local businesses is an ongoing effort and could potentially impact 2022. We are also waiting for more detailed information on our census numbers, so we can verify that the numbers are materially correct. The population of Mount Pleasant has a small impact on state shared revenue and also does have an impact on our Act 51 funding for streets. For November 8th, we're scheduled to have a work session and public hearing for the 2022 operating budget. If necessary, we also have a work session scheduled for November 22nd. If commissioners have questions or specific topics that they want to discuss as they relate to the budget, please let Manager Ridley know by October 25th. The charter requires that we adopt the budget by the last meeting of the year.
I'm not sure if Chris is with us still, but I thank him for that presentation.
He is with us, Mayor. I was. Nick, I need you to make me a co-host of the meeting, so I can move Chris in, please. I lost my co-host capability. While we're moving Chris in, Mayor, what I would mention is that, as Chris mentioned, we have two work sessions scheduled in November, and we can address many of your questions during that work session. But if there's anything that you have based on tonight's presentation that you'd really like to know tonight, Chris can try to answer that question, and now I can move him into the meeting. If you just give me a second, he should be in there. And we can address any immediate questions you may have, if any. There he is. Any immediate questions tonight?
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, Chris, I had a quick question on that tax of combination of parcels.
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit? I, I didn't.
I think it's under the fee section, Chris, where we were talking about implementing a fee for when someone applies to either combine or split parcels.
Correct. So the land division, the board, land division board meets from time to time for tax splits and combinations. Right now, there is no fee. We're recommending a fee of $150 for a split, plus $50 for each split beyond the first one, and 75 for combinations. Just basically something to cover the time that it takes to, to perform those. All of that work with the descriptions. Yep, correct.
I can understand that. And one other quick question for you. The equipment that was sold in the vehicles that were sold at DPW over the internet, do those funds stay with the DPW or they just go into the general fund?
They stay in the motor pool fund if it's motor pool equipment, and then it's used to offset the purchase of future equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, George.
Really nice presentation, Chris, by the way. Thank you. It's been pretty bright. I like the bird's eye view. I also had a question about the fees, and this is not for this budget, so it's got nothing to do with anything that's in the budget, but just in general. We've got lots and lots of fees for different things, right, for businesses applying for things and a variety of things. There's no way, is there a way that some cities might use that in a graded way? So that the fee is based on, I don't know, the status of the, in the company or the person making the application?
I honestly don't know enough about how other cities set their fees to give you an intelligent answer on that.
But, and I'm not talking about for this year, but in general. You know, I wonder whether the fees can't be, like, if you've got someone who's starting up a business, right, and they want to apply for certain fees, could that be different than someone who's got two or three businesses already, or? But maybe not. I mean, I just, anyway, that'd be.
Something we can, we can investigate if you have interest in it.
Yeah, maybe after we pass this budget and we talk about next year's budget. I'm not arguing right, right away, but it would just be interesting to get some new business going if we, you know, whatever. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, did you, do we have, I know the state, the state shared revenue is sort of an ongoing conversation in the, I think the legislature is in the process of passing a budget. Do we have any solid, I guess, a more concrete idea of what that looks like this year?
No, the, their most up-to-date projections are a few months old. And so that's what we've based the budget on, and until they give us new numbers, that's, that's what we have to roll with.
Okay.
Mayor, I would indicate that the municipal league has indicated that the budget includes a 2% increase in part of the state shared revenue. But it's also based on their projections of sales tax, so that's why we're waiting for the new numbers before we count on what that might look like. We like to use their projections instead of inserting our judgment into those. But the budget apparently includes a 2% increase on the statutory part of it.
Thank you. George?
So we will get you copies of those PowerPoint slides, because I think there's some good information on those, so we will email those out to you, so that you have a chance to look at those. And you've all received a printed copy of the budget. So as you get a chance to read through it and think through Chris's presentation, as he indicated just, you've got a couple of weeks to submit some questions, so that we can structure your November work sessions to address any questions or things you may want to talk about as a group before you get to approval.
Go ahead, George.
Is there some way, I don't, at some point, this should probably be put online. This might be too preliminary, but, but at some point, before we have a public hearing, do they, is there a presentation put online like this, so other people can see it, or?
Tonight's presentation will be available on our YouTube channel.
And the entire budget is available on our website as well. The entire printed budget is available on the website.
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I, it's good bedtime reading. I get it. But, you know, a presentation like this just is so much nicer to have available to people than, but great.
Well. Thank you, Chris. I really enjoyed your presentation, and I know a lot of work goes into putting together that, that even the paper document. And as always, it's, it's, it's easy to read and it explains a lot, so I really appreciate your work.
Yeah, and it's really, it's a team effort from all the departments, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. So the second item we have on your work session discussion tonight is to talk about. So the second item we have on your work session discussion tonight is to talk about the possibility of the outdoor ice rink. And we have updated the memo that was previously provided to you in a city commission packet when the decision was made to move this to work session. And I just wanted to point out briefly some of the new information that was included in this additional memo. What Phil included additionally was the delivery time that is expected for each of those two options as far as the number of weeks from the time we order it. He also included information on the size of what each of those rinks would be. He provided some weather data about what some of our average temperatures were to show how that might translate into the ability to use the outdoor rink and also had conversations with representatives from Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe who ran an ice rink last year, which was consistent with the weather data that he had looked at. He also, based on that conversation with the tribe, updated our staffing costs for the first option because what we learned during that is much of the ice maintenance that needs to be done actually has to happen in the middle of the night. So those numbers were updated to indicate what those middle-of-the-night staffing costs might be and a better estimate of the amount of time it might take. And then the other thing that was included is the brief summary of the conversation that Phil had with the ice arena staff about their interest in this as an option. And you could see that they were supportive of having this as an option if possible. And then the last thing that was included as a separate attachment was some of the assumptions that were made when those numbers were put together about the types of service levels we would have with that outdoor ice rink. So you have a bit more information now than you had a few weeks ago when this was first discussed. And what we're looking for tonight is to address any questions you might have, and that's why Phil is with us because he's done all of the research. And then we will be looking for some guidance from you as to whether you are interested in either one of those outdoor options and verification that you're comfortable with the service levels. And then the last piece of it is the other idea that came up about potentially doing a skating program at the ice rink, which, as we indicated, would take some logistics to figure out. So we wanted to make sure there was enough interest before we spent too much time working out the details of that. But we do know that the ice rink has indicated the soonest such a program could be available would be March of twenty-twenty-two because of the ice commitment times they have already made to other groups. So that's the data in summary that we have for you tonight. And as I indicated, we're available to answer any questions you have and then we'll be looking for some direction from you.
Manager Ridley, we discussed this before and have to apologize, I don't have the updated numbers for option one and two. I think there were like a hundred and nine thousand as opposed to twenty-some thousand before.
Now, the option one, the numbers are right around twenty-three to twenty-five thousand. Those are just a thousand or two higher than what they were before. And then the second option, the synthetic option, those numbers are the same as what they were before and would have a total cost in year one of a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Lori?
I'm sorry. I seen an outdoor rink in Claire. They did it under one of their pavilions in the park where they used the flat surface under the pavilion, some kind of tarp down, and then they didn't have to worry about cleaning it if there was snowfall, you wouldn't have to shovel it. It seems like the boards that were already on that pavilion or as you stepped in was the ones that were used. So I was just wondering if there might be some consideration of using a pavilion if they would, you know, if Bill would want to take a look at how Claire does that. And I also had a question if we did it within the baseball fields. Is there, is there a swinging door or, I mean, entryway? Is there a way to completely cut that off so somebody might not be using that at nighttime? I know that wouldn't be able to be possible if it was at a pavilion, but I'm just worried about a secure location at nighttime so people would not vandalize it after we put money into it. If, if, if we were going with the outdoor one, the real ice in the winter. Do those gates that the baseball field are in, is there gates in the entryway too? So it's completely sealed off?
Yeah, so the initial thought would be if we were to get the, the real ice rink, we would put it in the outfield of one of the baseball fields. Because it not only gives us the ability to lock those gates, it also gives us the lighting that we need.
Okay. Sorry about that, Phil. I said Bill, but I was thinking the memos. Forgive me.
No problem.
And Phil, I don't recall from our conversations, did you look at any ice rinks that were, that were put up under pavilions? Was that any of the researchers, is that a new concept we would need to look into?
It would be a fairly new concept to look into a little further. Just because, you know, it'll be a little bit different, but we would still have to buy the the cost would be similar. I think the size would be smaller.
Yeah, and that's another thing, just conceptually. What is it, fifty-four by ninety-five or something, fifty-five? What were the dimensions?
Yeah, fifty-four by ninety-five.
And a lot on the west side. It's about, what, seventy-five by one-fifty, right? Aren't they seventy-five up at the road and one-fifty deep?
For what?
For a lot. Yeah, I'm not sure, Commissioner Gillis, what that typical sizes. That seems wide to me, but that might be right.
Okay. I'm just trying to visualize how big the ice skating rink is. You know, by trying to use the dimensions I know of my lot.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
We have a lot and a half, but I think it's seventy-five by one-fifty, so it just doesn't seem like that's a very large ice skating rink. What I'm thinking that it looks, seems like it'd be really small. Like, how many people could ice skate at one time at a rink that size?
That I couldn't be exact with you.
It's a trick question.
The, the actual size itself is the large size for that particular model. So they don't get a whole lot bigger than that unless we special order. But you can get any size you want. It's just that that particular model seemed to be the standard for municipalities that, just how we were looking at it.
Thank you. Well, personally, oh, sorry, Will.
No, it's all right. Go ahead.
Personally, I favor the outdoor rink with real ice. I've, I've skated on that synthetic stuff and I don't know if we, I don't know if people would buy into that. I wouldn't buy into that. And being that it's a pilot program, I couldn't stomach a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to try to see if something works. I, I love the idea of something year-round. When we first started as a community making the ice rink, the Maury Courts, it was supposed to have a lot more ice time for community skating and it was taken over primarily for athletics and, and that's a great thing too, but it really cut down on, I think, community being involved in that and keeping up the ice skating, you know, habit or activity. But I do, I, I wouldn't, I would be willing to go into it with a twenty-five thousand dollars to see if there was people that are using it and people that, and if it could be free, of course, that's what I would want. I would obviously want it to be free. There's no entry fee. And of course, liabilities would be at the person who's skating. And then if we see that it is being really used a lot and, and it's being a draw for people to come into our community in winter months, I think that would be then another discussion and maybe that by then they will have developed something that's more ice-like or, you know, water-like, real ice with some of the synthetic. The other concerns I have with putting something permanent like that, like we have seen with the amphitheater, is vandalism. And if it's ruined once and, you know, we might have to scrap the whole hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars because someone does something stupid down there. And another consideration, heaven forbid, we never see another flood like we did in two thousand seventeen or before that. I think it was, uh, because there was another one with a decade, more, less than a decade before that. But island park floods all the time. And we've had, you know, we clean up the ball fields and we try to put everything back as much as we can, but I don't know if we could do that with a synthetic ice skating rink, if that would with, be able to withstand a flood down in island park. So those are my concerns and my ideas. Thanks for listening.
I want to give Pete a chance to talk.
Thank you. I just wanted to I agree with Commissioner Gillis on her comments and I remember in the past, because I've lived here a long time, where they just flooded the ball field there by the the main building there to the north. They just flood, put tarps down, flooded it out and had a skating rink and I, I think if we can go with option one, I think that'd be great and then we can try it out and see what happens. Phil, will we be able to do that this season here? Go with option one?
Yeah, I mean, it's, our estimated timeframe for that option is three to four weeks, so that would give us time and the season, if it stays along the timeline as last year, wouldn't start till January one anyway. Because it'll take five days of solid temperatures below twenty-two degrees roughly to build the ice up.
Thank you.
Mary?
I have a couple thoughts. One is that of the two options, I would agree with Lori and Pete to go with the natural ice, but at the same time, I am worried that we might not have that kind of cold, cold weather that we need. So I would also support looking into the kind of the March option of getting kids and maybe even families, you know, access to the ice rink.
George?
Yeah, I think typical figure skating rinks are probably about sixty meters by thirty meters, right? They're, they're, they tend to be a lot longer and a little less wide. And, you know, I don't know how many people you can put on them, but it's not a ton, but it's enough. I, I think Laurie's observations about hockey are accurate. I mean, if you look at the Maury Courts or the Ice Arena there, they have about ten hours a week for figure skating or open ice. All the other hours are hockey-based and the ice, the ice rink we have is not atypical, right? So if you skate in any ice rink in a city, unless it's like the Detroit Figure Skating Club where it's, it's, it's all figure skating, right? The, the club itself has three sheets of ice that are just figure skating. You know, it's dominated by hockey. I mean, it's just, I, I, I'm not against that. I don't, you know, but it's just, it's just the truth of it. There's more kids than play hockey than do other things. So that would be a concern is just making sure that you know, that it's dangerous if you're skating and kids have pucks and sticks, right? I mean, it's just a, you know, it's just, unless you have padding and unless you have a bucket of stick. So, so I mean, there have to be some sense that limiting the time for hockey versus something, I don't, I'm not anti-hockey. I'm just saying that that's, it's just the nature of the beast. I, I guess I, I don't have a horse in this race, but I'd probably go with the option one, I guess. I, I think I'd like the idea of working with the Ice Arena and buying sheets of ice. I, I, I don't, at some point, but you know, I, I, obviously they schedule a year ahead of time easily, you know, and but yeah, you know, and the other thing that had, I don't know if you know, but the Ice Arena closes all summer. I mean, it's not open during the summer. And I, I mean, it may be that there could be a summer, you know, the reason why they close during the summer is because it's expensive and they don't, you know, kids who play hockey are on holiday, you know, they're not, so I, I think there may be some options in both ways. Anyway, I'm just rambling, but I, you know, whatever.
And just to clarify, our expectation if we move forward with this outdoor ice rink is it would all be recreational skate. Our posted rules would indicate that there would be no hockey to be played on that because of, as you mentioned, the safety issues. So our posted rules would indicate that that would be the expectation.
Yeah. Good luck. Are you going to have someone down there monitoring or?
No, we will not have staff on site, but certainly if we receive complaints about that, staff can go respond to that.
Yeah, I guess I might think maybe have hockey, I apologize, I'll be quiet in a minute. Maybe have hockey at some times or have, not hockey, on that size, they couldn't play a game, but hockey practice or something for certain hours and I, whatever. I don't, I guess.
We do that with the skate park. There's certain rules and even though the skate park is its own animal, there have been people that have called, you know, our dispatch to say they had to come down because, you know, people were doing unsightly things at the skate park. So I'm sure as long as it's posted, because I wouldn't want to see hockey down there. Hockey, that, that's why we don't have any skate time at the ice rink as it is, is because that's dominated by the athletics. So I would like it more to be more family-oriented and community-oriented and bringing your down and so you can actually, if you wanted as a parent, to be able to drop your kids off to skate and then maybe go uptown to have something at a restaurant, knowing that they'd be okay. You know, we're not talking little kids, but you know, kids that would be, but that's what, yeah. So, but we will be, and I'm glad to know that we're not gonna, we're gonna have that kind of a policy, obviously, and for liability, so.
Go ahead, Pete.
I think in the past, it was mostly family-oriented as Commissioner Gillis spoke on. And I think they had music playing there and I don't, I don't think they had very many problems. The only problem was the, they couldn't do it again because the tarps had holes in them, so. I mean, I, I think we should move forward and go with option one and give it a whirl and, you know, see if it works like it did before. I mean.
More outdoor activities in the middle of winter, we could all get on skates, maybe.
I don't think so.
Right. Is there any other comments, thoughts, questions? I do have one question. What would be the like the operating hours for the rink?
Phil, I'm assuming it would be coincide with what our hours of island park are, which is eight AM to, is it ten PM or is it eleven?
It's ten, I believe.
So it'd be eight AM to ten PM.
And I know, I know one of the questions posed in the beginning of the, the work session agenda packet is, is about the labor and it looks like you have labor for like ninety days. And then, but it looks like the rink may only be, you know, January, February. So I'm wondering is, you know, is that kind of including like putting it up, taking it down? Or is that just kind of guess high, hopeful, you know?
So I factored a couple of days in there in case we have some extensive work where we need two individuals. You know, we're, we would obviously hope for sixty days of full op- Um, you know, we're, we would obviously hope for sixty days of full operation. Um, and so those extra thirty would be more for if we had to pull in an extra person or if the five days actually fell in December to get the ice rink ready for January. Um, there's a lot of different things after speaking with other individuals where two people are helpful when, you know, there, there could be some significant cracking that needs to be repaired at night or, you know, different things that could pop up, obviously, the hope would be we wouldn't need to use it all, um. But that, I'm just filling in for what I've been told, so.
Yeah. Uh, Amy?
Um, Phil, can you tell me when the um uh, when the tribe used the skating rink last year, um, did they find any issues or had? Is it something that they plan on doing every year?
From my understanding, they were planning on doing it again this year.
Okay.
And they really didn't feel any, that there was any significant issues. Um, it seems like it's more of a smaller operation over there. Um, and so it was a little easier to work around certain things, but um, their issues were just how far the water source is away from the rank and
Yeah.
those, those types of things, so.
Okay, did they, did they feel that they had um significant uh use or efficient use of it? I mean, was there enough people using it?
They were happy with the use, I don't think that it was, you know, the demand was outrageous where they're looking at putting another one down. Um, but you know, that, I think they were happy enough to be able to run it again the next year.
Okay.
I can attest that that it's used quite a bit in the winter, um, there's some youth out there that use it for practice for lacrosse, also during the winter, it's really big for both hockey or skating and in that whole area that isn't a skating rink in the winter, it's a lacrosse arena in the summer. For lacrosse.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Pete?
Yeah, they also have a nice track out there that they, they build during the winter time for uh snowmobile races and bike races, motorcycle races, on ice, on a nice track there behind the casino uh to the west.
Did they use like spikes on the tires and stuff?
Yes, yeah. Absolutely.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I had no idea.
Yeah, it's a big sport.
So on the ice rink, it sounds like the majority of you who have spoken up seem to favor option one to see how this might work this year. Um, so what we could do based on that feedback is at your next meeting, we could bring a budget amendment for that to you so that we could allocate the funds this year so that we can go ahead and purchase the tarp and get it ordered. And then we would be able to carry those funds over into next year for the labor of that and be able to, or as soon as, as Phil said, as soon as the weather cooperates, we could get it up and running if we're lucky enough. I guess that's one way to look at it, if we're lucky enough to be that cold in December, um, we could get it started early. But we would ask you to allocate the full twenty-five thousand dollars of funds upfront so that we're all set and just carry those funds over if needed, so we could put that on your next agenda for you to um, take formal action on.
Thank you, Nancy. Anything else that you need from the commission tonight?
I think we are all set.
All right.
Well, I can, I can tell you, if we get this ice skating rink down there and it, I will go down and I will ice skate and take a picture of it, of myself and send it to you, just so you know that one of us have went down there and tried that.
You might have to give lessons, Commissioner Gillis.
I won't go skating, but I'll send my boys with it, how's that?
Okay.
All right.
What did you say, Nancy?
I said you might have to give lessons to some people.
Oh, yeah. I used to skate when I was younger, but oh, I do, but they do must have baby skates or, you know, something that like with double blades, you know, yeah, hopefully.
Yeah. I think at the uh, you know, a lot of public skate, they have like big cones or like a little like PVC kind of thing that people can like lean on.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a community member make a couple of those and just have it inside that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in case.
All right, well, um, it's been a great meeting, uh, and it's nine fifteen. And if there's no objection, I think we're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.